Good evening, everyone. Calling this meeting to order, the Planning Board, September 21st, 2023. Opening statement, Eileen.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on March 31st, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristiano.
President.
Mr. Greenfield's been excused. Mr. Leggio.
Here.
Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse. I've not heard from him. Councilman Gager.
Here.
Mr. Mercer.
Here.
Ms. Pike. I've not heard from her. Chairman Bavai has been excused. And Chairman Husser.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And could we please all rise for a pledge of allegiance? And afterwards, a moment of silence for all fallen men and women serving abroad protecting our country.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Eileen, any approval of minutes?
I have no minutes this evening.
Any vouchers?
No vouchers this evening.
Any correspondence?
Yes, I have a letter from Nicholas Montenegro. He is the attorney for Richard Sibb. That's the first case on tonight's agenda. With reference to the above matter, he said the applicant is requesting that we reschedule his application because he has to redo his plans. And he gave the board an extension of time through the end of December 2023, and he understands that when he is rescheduled, he will have to notice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, you want anything on that?
Yeah, they're going to re-notice if there's no announcements mailed.
Okay, thanks. Any resolutions?
I have no resolutions.
We had emailed three out, submission waivers, yesterday. If the board had a chance to look at them, they don't need to be on the agenda.
Did anyone get a chance to look at them? It doesn't appear that way.
Okay, we can carry them.
Okay.
And let the record reflect, Mr. Tannenhouse is here.
Welcome, Brian. Good to see you. Okay, on to submission waivers. First one we have is case number SD 3012-391 Oak Glen LLC for a minor subdivision with ancillary variance relief. Counselor.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Dante Alferi, on behalf of the applicant, we are here seeking a few checklist waivers. Laura, do you have?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have an August 25th, 2023 review letter where the submission waivers are specifically outlined in item three on page four. Because this is a minor subdivision, it's two lots existing, they're reconfiguring, and it's two lots. So for those reasons, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete. I know this board is used to me asking for the 2,000-foot downstream drainage analysis, but this isn't a major development. So because of, for that reason, I would take no exception for the purposes of completeness.
Great. Thanks, Laura. Anybody, any questions? I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to grant the submission waiver.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mr. Leggio.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse.
Yes.
Councilman Gager.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate your time today.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care, guys. Okay, the final submission waiver this evening's case number SD 3009 Augustine Kim for a minor subdivision with ancillary variance relief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members.
Counselor.
This is Howard from Freehold on behalf of the applicant, who's also here, by the way. Good evening, everybody.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. So apparently, this was a busy day in my office. I also have a review letter dated August 25th, 2023, where the submission waivers are outlined on page three, item three. And similar to the last application, this is also a minor subdivision. So for those reasons, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Agreed.
Excellent. Any questions?
I have none.
I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who was the motion?
Fred.
And Brian was second. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mr. Leggio.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse.
Yes.
Councilman Gager.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, have a good night.
And I see Ms. Pike has joined us.
Yeah, sorry. I'll stop that work, sorry.
It's all right. Welcome.
Okay, as far as the applications this evening, we're going to do a little rearranging just for time's sake, which makes most sense for the board. First, we are going to hear, which is listed as letter C under applications, case number SP 1106-9-North Realty LLC for preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance and design waiver relief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Where are you?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for taking us first.
Absolutely.
For the short application, I appreciate the courtesy. My name is Dennis Collins of the firm Collinsville in Casolo. I have the honor of representing 9-North Realty this evening in what I think is maybe my smallest site plan application ever that's been around for over a year. I represent the Ivy League. I suspect that the board is familiar with that property. With me this evening is Joe Koshuba, who I would expect the board has previously accepted as an expert. Also, Tom Jasper, a principal of the owner of 9-North Realities here, answer any questions. And I would proceed once you recognize jurisdiction, et cetera. Would you mind if I sat down and had you?
Sure.
Yeah, that thing on the thing is a microphone.
Oh, it's a mic? Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Joseph Koshuba, K-O-C-I-U-B-A-K-B-A Engineering Services, Manasquah, New Jersey.
Mr. Collins, if you could just briefly qualify, Mr. Koshuba.
Certainly. Mr. Koshuba, could you give the board the benefit of your educational background, any professional license you hold, and any experience you've had testifying before landing boards?
Certainly. I have a bachelor's and master's degree from Roan University in civil and structural engineering. I'm a licensed engineer and licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, have been licensed as an engineer since 2005, planner since 2007. I have testified before numerous boards, including this one.
We will accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And actually, just to save time, I would ask Mr. Koshuba to give you a brief outline of what we're proposing. I would just note that this property, or this improvement, is an existing improvement that arose out of the township's COVID regulations related to outdoor dining. And I speak a lot to Matt Howard, and he indicated, obviously, that if we were going to try to make that a permanent thing, we'd come here. So that's the purpose is it's been around for a while. But I'd ask Mr. Koshuba just to narrate, and please feel free to interrupt at any time with any questions. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
It's probably best if we can bring up the exhibit sheet two of the site plan? We have a, everyone's probably familiar with the Ivy League. It's on a 1.3-acre lot, corner Route 9, East Third. It's in the highway commercial zone, built in the mid-'70s. And as a result of COVID, there was a patio installed at the rear of the building, surrounded by a fence. The patio is about 500 square feet, was to serve as an outdoor dining area through the COVID timeframe. It has approximately, we estimated a conservative 40 seats for that area. The existing bar and dining room has 126 seats. So as a result, the parking requirements for the proposal would require 56 parking spaces. 91 parking spaces exist at the restaurant, so we're more than adequately parked as a result of that area. It is an outdoor dining area used in the, you know, some late spring, early fall, mostly summertime. It does not have any heating, there's no live music. It's purely meant for outdoor dining at the time. And then, most recently, it's kind of the de facto smoking area. The restaurant did have an issue in the past about anyone who exited the facility to go smoke would go to the front patio. If you've been to it, there's a very large area in the front of the building. People would be standing up front as families are coming in for dinner. It's made just a better location for it. It is fully surrounded by a fence. The, it is in a buffer, so we do require variance relief for that, and it does increase the impervious coverage about 500 square feet, which is about 0.8%. So there are variances necessary for those changes. It is fully enclosed. We do have a photo identifying the side view from the parking lot, anyone who hasn't been there. And what we're going to show you is a photo of a fence. You can't see the patio or the location from the street, across the street. These are photos of the interior of the fenced area, just showing the stone, the patio area. Probably that next photo is the best, there we go, there's the side photo. So that's a photo from the street. You can see the right-hand side, those two vehicles, the white and tan vehicle. Right behind that is a shadow box fence. Behind that fence is where this outdoor patio area is. So it's not visible from the street or from the neighboring property, surrounded completely by a privacy fence. So we are requesting variance relief for that to remain. Again, it was installed as a result of COVID. In the timeframe, it's been there several years. There have been no complaints or issues as a result of the usage there. We do have an aerial photograph, if we could bring that up.
Aerial photograph?
The aerial. It is next to an existing residential lot east of the property. That residential lot has three homes, a home and two kind of bungalows on it. It's three residential units on one lot. The closest is that residential unit immediately to the right, right there, yeah, top left. That home is the closest home to it. It's about 53 feet from the fenced area. Those homes have been there since the restaurant was built in the '70s. Been no complaints, no issues. The fence line on the property is about three or four feet into the property. The closest point of the patio is about 13 feet from the property line. It's very small, 500 square feet. Again, we estimate it very heavily with the number of seats. It does not actually, it does not get used for that amount, that quantity of people regularly. In COVID, it did, but since then, you know, it's just a nice area outside to eat. So we feel the variances can be granted under the C2 criteria by providing outdoor enjoyment. And I do not believe there's any detriment to the zone plan, zoning ordinance, or the public good as a result of the application.
Mr. Koshuba, that applies to all the variances and waivers as identified by Ms. Newman and Ms. Bean? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there anything in their reports, though, that they've requested that we need to address today, or would be clearly in appropriate condition of any approval if the board were sort of granting that?
Correct. The only other items, ordinance requirements, and existing nonconformity for not having any sidewalks, and existing nonconformity for a shed setback, those are all pre-existing nonconformities, not being changed as a result of the application. And again, the parking is fully compliant. We can abide by all the comments in both the board planner, board engineers' review letters, unless they have any particular questions for us this evening.
I would say they should put sidewalk. Every single applicant that we have that comes in on Route 9, we require a sidewalk. So I get there's no sidewalk now, but you should provide sidewalk because there is legitimately a tremendous number of people that traverse up and down Route 9 to get onto the New Jersey Transit buses. You should put the sidewalk in.
Also, in my opinion, I think some bollards would be appropriate as well, especially for the ones that are closest to the, at least directly perpendicular to that fence line.
I don't disagree.
Where those white cars were? Where those white cars were? Yeah. So the two parking stalls right there? Our new ordinance requires all, if this was a brand-new application, right, a new building, all that head-on parking would require all those parking stalls in front of the building to have a bollard. The reason being is, is there's been numerous, over the last 15 years or so, there's been numerous accidents where people just hit the accelerator. It's as silly as it sounds, they hit the accelerator instead of the brake.
It's happened a lot.
And so that's why we have an, we added it to our ordinance.
We actually have the distinction of our former traffic engineer eating at a restaurant that a car crashed into.
But in addition, we have literally required every applicant on Route 9 to put in sidewalk.
Correct.
Period.
They're conferring.
Can I just speak?
Especially in that area, it's a very heavily bus-stop used area. Well, there's just this, Jen, while they're deliberating, there's just, right now, there's just a sidewalk on the side street, there just physically isn't one in front of Route 9.
Correct. And they, and quite honestly, we see a lot of people walking up and down Route 9 to get to the bus stops.
Agreed.
So, yes.
We would agree as a condition of approval.
Perfect.
We will write sidewalks in bollards.
Okay, thank you.
Is Ed bollards? Yes.
And I'm sorry, I'm not standing, but as direct, obviously, in locations as directed by your board professionals, particularly related to the bollards, is that?
I want to clarify that. So are, does the board just want to see the bollards with the parking directly at the outdoor area? I think we just need to clarify that.
Look. And that's my understanding, is next to the outdoor area. Look, it's an existing building. I'm not sure it would be fair for us to put bollards everywhere. My preference would be to put the bollards in every single parking spot that's perpendicular to the face of the building. It's just an added protection for the owner. I mean, if a car goes through that outside wall, someone's getting hurt. That's the reason for it. But definitely, at minimum, the parking spots that are...
Directly by the outdoor area. Understood.
And we would agree to them by the outdoor area. Across the front, anyone familiar with it? There's a large brick wall in that front. There's...
The outdoor area is subject to the review and approval of the board engineer.
Yeah, and no objection? Thank you.
No problem.
Jen, Laura, anything else?
Nope.
No.
Does anybody have any questions here?
Chairman, I'm hoping Mr. Akins does not represent an objector, though. I'm just kidding.
Counselor, any closing remarks?
I have nothing. It's such a small application.
Understood.
I get paid by the hour, Mr. Chairman, but I don't...
Anybody from the public? Seeing none.
Better than Rudy Giuliani's attorneys.
All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion from the board.
Second. Thank you, with the agreed.
With the agreed bollards.
Bollards and sidewalk.
I appreciate the generosity of putting in the sidewalks and bollards, I really do.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mr. Leggio.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse.
Yes.
Councilman Gager.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Ms. Pike.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Motion carries. Application's approved.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, take care.
He will.
Very cool. All right, second and final application for this evening, case number SP 1011A-2 Wenclere Real Estate LLC, preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance and design waiver relief. Counselor, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Mark Akins on behalf of the applicant, Wenclere LLC. Chairman, board members, permission to...
Absolutely, yeah. If you're comfortable.
Terrific, thank you. Table's a little low for a tall guy like me. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an application that is a smaller version of a site plan, preliminary and final site plan that was approved in 2015 by this same board. At that time, we obtained approval for preliminary and final site plan for a restaurant of 3,429 square feet. This evening, we're reduced and proposed at 2,380 square feet, a reduction of about 1,049 square feet for a variety of different reasons. The property, as I think you know, is on, it's in the HD1 zone. It's got frontage on Route 9 North where a proposed right-in and right-out driveway is proposed. And it's got over 300 feet of frontage on West Farms Road where a multi-directional ingress and egress is proposed. With me this evening, ladies and gentlemen, are the project engineer Vincent Kelly, as well as a licensed professional planner, Daniel Block. I don't know, Chairman, counsel, if they should be sworn, both sworn at this time or...
We'll take one at a time.
One at a time, very good.
Okay, so who's going to testify first? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Vincent Kelly, K-E-L-L-Y, business address 101 Crawford's Corner, Homestead, New Jersey. Graduated in 2011 via...
Mr. Kelly, you can sit down and just get closer to the mic.
2011 with a civil engineering license or background. I've been licensed for four years, been testifying in New Jersey ever since that time. Before I got licensed, I was testifying in Pennsylvania as well, all up across New Jersey. I haven't had the pleasure of being in front of you guys just yet, so...
Yeah, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Just checking the exhibit list, Chairman.
Sure.
Okay. Yes. Okay, Mr. Kelly, what can you tell us about the proposed Wendy's on Route 9 at the corner of West Farms Road? Sure. So the exhibit that is behind you, I also have some handouts, if that'd be more helpful. So the, as already described, this project was approved back in 2015 and was amended for a different building, square footage back in 2017. For just, you know, kind of various reasons, some of it kind of due to COVID, kind of project kind of got put on pause for a little while. And we are in front of you today to basically get this re-approved and work on getting the rest of the permits for all of our outside agencies. As noted, the building was about 3,400 square feet. That was originally approved. What we're here today is just 2,380 square feet. The second approval had 56 seats interior, where we're proposing 30. As you could see, this is what the layout looks like today. Back in 2015, 2017, this is exactly what the layout looked like as well. We're proposing a right-in, right-out off of Route 9, as well as alternate access in the rear of the building. It's to an existing driveway that actually connects to West Farms Road. There is a cross-axis easement with the neighboring property, Suburban Propane. We're basically keeping the same width and everything like that, we're just providing some curbing to kind of delineate where it actually is. I think it's mixed between pavement and gravel, as it is today. That driveway on West Farms is a full-movement driveway. We're providing a combination between one-way flow. So as you enter off Route 9, you'll travel in the, I guess, northeast direction until you get to the middle of the site, which is right around where the trash enclosure is. That's where you will enter the drive-thru. If you do miss the drive-thru, directly after that is a bypass lane where you'll circulate the site, and then we have a cut-through to get back in into the drive-thru. All that is one-way flow. In the rear of the site, we are proposing two-way flow, and that's if you want to come off Route 9, come into the drive-thru that way, or if you want to exit off of West Farms Road.
So is there an existing easement for Suburban Propane?
Correct. Correct.
And is that intersection of West Farms and the proposed driveway, is that under DOT jurisdiction or local jurisdiction?
Local jurisdiction.
And you can have the full movement, it can cross the striping?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a new exhibit, this has not been marked, correct?
Correct. We should mark this A1.
No, it's going to be A22.
A22, okay. And we'll describe it as a rendering of the site, a colorized rendering of the site plan, is that fair? That is fair. A22. Thank you.
A question on this.
Sure.
The back, ingress, egress, if they make a left onto West Farms, they could take that drug handle, I guess, out onto Route 9?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't know why they would do that as opposed to just coming out onto Route 9.
Well, that's my question.
So that would just get you back on, like...
I mean, if you go to the light or you go that way.
The likelihood of that driveway is to go to the light and to go the other direction, correct?
Correct.
Like, they're not going to take that route to go north. They could go right back out.
It would be...
Well, I disagree on that. I completely disagree, and that's why I brought it up.
The boy's a light.
That light's backed up, they're going to try and go around and get in there and go onto Route 9 to bypass the light.
Oh, you think they have to cut through?
Kind of like Aldrich.
Oh.
Where the people come out of the bus stop and they go around.
Or like Aldrich used to do when he used to cut through Northwoods.
Right. That's my concern there.
Have you looked at the memory care facility that just got, that got approved not that long ago and where the driveways associated with that are located?
Yes, it's a couple lots back south of our...
Towards?
South, if you were to go...
Not south, you're talking?
East.
East.
Yes.
Okay. So it's not like even in a conflict issue at all?
No.
Okay. Let me ask you this, Mr. Akins, like, the applicant has an approval for a Wendy's at this location currently, right?
It has preliminary and final approval, yes.
Right, so there already is an approval.
There is. It was approved in 2015 and...
Right, I just wanted to put this, like, out there.
Was that, was that the original approval?
Yes, but the building was bigger, I think, right?[1729.66]
Correct.
The building was a bigger building.
And, and many more seats.
So?
So we had?
This is not a new, like, they actually have the ability to build their approval, which is a bigger facility, at this location, correct, Mr. Akins?
That's, that's correct, and the easement that you referred to before must be?
Was part of it.
Has always been part of this property, right.
A hundred percent, yep.
The property was originally, both, the property that my client has acquired, and he's, he was a contract buyer many years ago, but he's since closed title and owns it now, was subject to that easement, so that easement is in perpetuity for the benefit of suburban propane, which is the next lot to the south.
But your bigger building or your prior approval?
Correct. Has a, has a larger building, more seats interior.
And?
It's also an older model, so it doesn't look like the new Wendy's as you would see today.
But was utilizing that same access point?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I just want, I just want to make sure everyone's?
With the right-in, right-out, as I shared in my?
Right, I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Introductory remarks from Route 9, right, so there's many points of access here.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, please continue, Mr. Kelly.
Sure. The site also has sidewalks along Route 9, it also has a proposed sidewalk along West Farms as well, understanding that, you know, there's a decent amount of foot traffic that's there. We are proposing a sidewalk that connects from Route 9 and West Farms Road to the building, so there is ADA access that is granted, or actually is provided. You also notice kind of a lighter greenery spot on the site at West Farms Road. We're not fully developing this entire site. This site is about 70% wooded, with the rest is just overland grass. We are, we're basically keeping almost a half acre of existing trees. So along West Farms Road, if you're traveling either direction, if you try and look into the site, it's going to be fully screened, so you're not going to be able to see that all the, all the access, or not the access, the visibility and everything like that is fully coming from Route 9.
Thank you.
Yes. So as I, as I mentioned, this facility will be equipped with a drive-thru, same, same drive-thru that was approved a handful of years ago, can accommodate nine, nine cars before we have a crosswalk that connects the northern parking stalls to the building. If a car were to sit over the, the crosswalk, we'd have 10 cars.
And Mr. Kelly, the parking spaces are going to include the required EV spaces?
That is correct. New Jersey's mandate for how many parking spaces we're proposing requires one EV charging space, and we're proposing that. That is in the lower right-hand corner in front of the building. It is signed and striped accordingly, and there's enough room to put the equipment, the ballards, and still provide an ADA access around the, the unit itself. We are actually seeking relief for the amount of parking spaces on-site. Per the ordinance requirement, we need 80 parking spaces, where we're proposing 42. Now, with the EV charging space, and we do get a credit for one more space, so technically we're providing 43. As the previous approval was granted a variance, they needed 86 parking spaces, only providing 42, no EV, so we are basically making the relief a little bit better with this application. We are also requesting relief.
If I could, I just, just so the board remembers, because I, I remember this application from 2015, 2017, and as I recall, you guys had taken parking counts over at the Wendy's in the other location in Howell Township.
That's correct.
And that's the same, is, are you the witness that would just speak to that?
Yes.
Okay.
So we did provide a parking study originally. There is another Wendy's about four miles down the road. That building is about 1,000 square foot larger than this building that we're proposing. The parking, we did both the parking and a queuing study there. The, the parking study basically identified that there's around seven, eight cars that were, was being utilized at its peak time. So, you know, 42 is well above 47, that was noted. Even if you double it or triple it, we'd be well sufficient for what we anticipate this use being. Same thing with the queuing study, a larger facility. During that study, it was noted that there was around seven, eight cars that had peak demand. As I mentioned before, we're providing nine, sometimes maybe 10. So it won't interfere with the, the drive aisles or anything like that. Everyone will have circulation to go up and around the building.
And there's the evacuation lane as well, correct?
Correct. So there is a bypass lane just north of the, the drive-thru and the trash enclosure. That is how folks do exit the site. Also, if they're coming off West Farms, or if they do miss the drive-thru, they will circulate and then re-enter the site if they need it. But that is also how you make a right out of the site back onto Route 9. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question.
Sure.
For the professionals, you've, we talked about that this was prior approval going all the way back?
I didn't think it was on, sorry.
What exactly was approved? Was there anything grandfathered in as far as ingress and egress and any of that? What, what are we actually, like, looking at here that we can decide on other than?
Well, essentially, their site plan approval, although the zoning here hasn't changed, nothing has changed, we have some ordinance changes, so the main reason that they really would be back here is, one, the, the timing, right? So the, the timing of that approval, but I think the only major change in the ordinance has been the stormwater management regulations. Those have substantially changed, so while it's not grandfathered, this was the previous layout that was reviewed and approved by this board, really on two different occasions. I think they got their initial approval back in 2015, modified it in 2017, and now they're back again. So I think the main focus is really what has changed since the prior approval. They can certainly speak to it, but I think the primary change or the only change that I'm really aware of in our code is really probably sidewalk along Route 9 and stormwater management regulations.
Okay, yeah, oh, thank you.
So we certainly, Councilman, we certainly want to make a thorough record, but we're also trying to be as efficient as possible for the board's benefit, so we certainly want to give the board the benefit of every, every question and answer that we can, mindful that we're talking about a smaller facility with less square footage, far less parking, far less intensity than that which has been, let's just say, recently approved. Thank you.
Please continue, Mr. Kelly.
Sure. So as I've mentioned, we're not fully developing the site. We are keeping 0.4 acres of trees. We provided a woodland management plan, it's the same plan that was previously approved. This site has sat vacant since, and undisturbed, unchanged since the original approval and the Second Amendment. We are proposing, obviously, as you could see, a, in my opinion, a decorative landscaping plan. This has changed slightly, there was a few more trees, a few more shrubs that were asked to be provided around the monument sign, so we do, we have updated that accordingly. There was a recommendation for a different type of species for a little bit of deer pressure. We have a few species that were provided to us. Don't have an issue making those changes at the board's and professionals' discretion. There's a relief that we were looking for, it's the same type of relief that was previously granted. We need to provide a planting center-on-center of trees, about 40 to 60 feet. We're slightly over that in a few areas, about 70 feet, and that's due to the light pole locations and some of the stormwater management infrastructure that we're required to have. So it's not overly huge, but it is slightly different than what the ordinance requires. Just like the previous approval, there will be adequate lighting provided on-site. We are proposing LED light fixtures, more or less the same location as previously was approved. Most of the poles are about 20 feet high. There is one 24-foot pole directly in the rear of the building that faces the, the trash enclosure, and that's just due to get adequate light for loading and unloading operations. There are also?
So wait.
Sure.
How many additional poles would be necessary for you to comply?
With? We, we do comply now.
With the height of the light pole?
Correct.
So there's no relief associated with lighting?
No, there is something noted in the plan that we have zero foot handle in certain areas. That was more to show where the foot handles kind of die off in the middle of the property and along West Farms Road. Minimum required is 0.3 feet?
Yeah.
Foot, foot handle, so we do provide that in all the pavement areas. Parking is 0.5 absolute minimum, and within the, the drive aisles, it's one. The only caveat to that is along Route 9, DOT only allows a minimum, or maximum foot handle of 0.2, so we're forced to kind of comply with that, and that's due to headlights, you know, and obviously it's a heavily traveled roadway, so the headlights really themselves light it up. It's, it's more for oncoming people, how many times you drive by the road, see the headlights coming the opposite way. You don't need that coming off a, a commercial development as well as you're driving by, so.
I just want to be clear so that I understand. Are you saying that you comply everywhere, or there's a, there's a portion where you don't comply because of inconsistency with the NJDOT?
With, with DOT, we were, we were permitted or only required?
No, that is not?
The answer is yes, we don't provide 0.3 foot handles at?
Then you need, then you need relief, and that's the?
They need a waiver, yes.
And that's the justification for the waiver?
Correct.
Okay.
Where's that again?
So that, so the, the min, the minimum should be, and Brian, you're there, right?
Yeah.
So the minimum should be 0.3 foot handles anywhere, and the average max 0.5 over the entire area. The applicant's proposing a minimum of zero and an average of 2.4.
And where were the zeros again? I'm sorry, I was?
I mean, that's what I'm asking you.
So some of the zeros fall within the existing trees that we're providing? We also have a zero, we're, and it was more to show that we're providing zero foot handles in West Farms Road.
Just tell us where?
Just say where you don't comply, yeah.
Along West Farms Road and the existing trees. Correct, right there, basically that whole area.
Do your, do your entrances, your ingress and egress have appropriate lighting that meet DOT standards?
Correct.
They do?
Yes, they do.
Okay. The only other comment I'd bring up is, is the F fixture is not in compliance with the ordinance 188-22. It's, it's a full forward throw fixture, it does not, it does not have any type of shielding or anything that allows the, the light to radiate no more than 7.5% above the horizontal plane of the lamp. Sorry, that got stuck by me, this, the gold, Gold's Gym, they got, that, that got stuck by us, I'm not letting that happen again.
No problem, we have no problem updating that.
And that, and, and when I mean updated, it's got to be updated on the plans, and it has to be reviewed by our professionals, because it can't just be in the, in, in any type of resolution, because it just gets messed up.
We'll stipulate to providing on the plans.
It's got to be updated on the plan.
Correct.
And do you have ballers where you have those parking spots perpendicular to the base of the?
We do.
The building?
We do, yes.
And are you still needing a force main, or has things changed and we're now gravity?
We, we still need a force main, correct.
Do we have a generator to back up that force main? Do you foresee one being needed?
We do not foresee one being needed, not, not at this time, no. I don't think they're going to be selling too much food if the, the whole power goes out.
All the mechanical equipment on the roof, I know we don't have architectural plans, but all the mechanical equipment on the roof will be appropriately screened, so it can't be seen from driving up or down Route 9.
Correct.
Have you taken into consideration any hills or other elevation changes on Route 9 that may put that road a little higher than, than normal?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, keep going. Yeah, no problem, keep going. Would you like to see what the new building will look like?
Sure.
Okay. Go to the colored elevation? Colored elevation, please. Yes. So we're going to mark this exhibit A23. This is the, this is colored elevation of what, what the building will look like.
Was this previously submitted?
It was.
Because they had architectural color elevations as A5.
Correct, so it was previously submitted, however, it was kind of mislabeled, so on this exhibit, I corrected it. On the top-left corner, that's the, the rear of the building, so that's if you're coming off?
So then the answer, this is not what was previously submitted?
It's not previously submitted.
So we'll mark this as a new exhibit?
Yes.
A23.
Yeah.
A23. And again, the purpose is not to change the colors, but to correctly identify the elevations, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So starting at the top-left, this is the, the rear of the building. If you were to come off West Farms Road or off Route 9 as you're circulating around in the drive-thru, this is the, the rear of the building that you would see. The top-right is the frontage along Route 9. This is where the main doors are, it is also where one of the proposed building signs are, this is the Wendy's logo. The middle picture is the portion of the, I guess, south of the site. As you're coming off Route 9, driving up before you get into the drive-thru, this is the side of the building that you will be represented with. And then the last exhibit is the, is the drive-thru side of the building. You can see there is the, the pay window, and then the second window, plan right, is where you will be, pick up your food. As we kind of just went over, the, the building is provided with parapets to screen the HVAC and equipment on top of the roof. It meets, the building itself meets all the, the impervious coverage, obviously, you know, we're reducing it from previous application, the height of it, everything like that meets ordinance codes. I guess we could, so we could talk about signage as well?
Please.
That roof hatch, or roof ladder, that, that's going to be on the south side of the building?
It's on the, the back of the building.
The ladder axis, the partial ladder axis, upper right-hand corner, middle, middle image?
Yes, so that, that is, it, it's not technically the back, it's on the, the side as you come off Route 9, but it's the, the corner?
The south side.
The south side, correct, yes.
You don't think you'll see that from Route 9? You would rather put that on the backside or, or on the north side where the trees may, the debris may hide it?
Me personally, I don't think you're going to be able to see it from Route 9. West Farms, again, you have that large dense screening that you're not going to see it as well. Okay.
Just, I, I put up the site plan just so you could see, if I go back to this, I think why he's saying you can't see it is because?
It's pretty far in.
It's the setback of the building.
Plus, there's the neighboring building that as you're coming through, you're not going to be able to see it.
Sorry, just building a nice building, just, just say it that way.
Understood. Uh, you can actually stay, is it okay if I flip back a few times? Okay, can we go back to the exhibit? So again, this is A2, colorized version of what the site will look like. So we're proposing a freestanding sign along Route 9. Uh, thank you. It's in the, the lower right-hand corner of the site. You can see I have a leader calling it out. This is a pylon sign, seven feet, 17 feet tall, it has an area of 55 square feet. The previous application had an overall square foot of almost 80, which is the max allowed in the, the plan, so we are decreasing the, the sign, the overall size of it, understanding that, you know, there's a lot of development on Route 9, and we don't really want it really oversigned on there. Now, in the, the rear of the building, or the rear of the site, excuse me, along West Farms, we are proposing a monument sign as well. This is five feet tall, eight foot wide. The bottom lower two feet of the proposed monument sign will have a decorative brick base, so it has an overall square foot of 40. This is also smaller, more kind of compact than what was previously proposed.
But still needs relief, right?
Uh, the overall, the overall count of the signage still needs relief?
Yes.
Uh, not the, the monument sign itself.
Agreed, but the number of signs you're proposing with the application?
Correct. The overall number of signs we're proposing with this application is seven. The previous application had, actually had eight. So there's two freestanding signs, one pylon, like I mentioned, one monument. There's three building signs, one along Route, the face of Route 9, which is the Wendy's logo as I described. The other two are the Wendy's script. other two are the Wendy's script, uh, both on the, uh, south and north side of the, the building. The one we did remove, uh, is the one from the top right. Uh, I was, I was just gonna respond to her, her direction. Um, that, that sign back there, we, we agreed to remove. Uh, felt that it wasn't really necessary, uh, so we took that one off the table.
Which one?
Uh, the one on, I would say, the northeast side of the building. If you go back to the exhibit, I could, I could show you. It's the one that faces the trash enclosure, that side. Yes, yes. Uh, okay. Um, there also is, uh, two small directional signs as you enter and exit the, uh, the site. Uh, they are, uh, about two feet tall, about two point two square feet, uh, in area. They don't have any Wendy's logos or anything like that. It's just an enters, uh, enter sign and an exit sign. Uh, we are asking for relief for the entrance sign, because it is close to the, the property line. So it's just slightly under one foot. Uh, what's required is twenty feet. Uh, but if you kinda look at the, the plan, you can kinda see that the, the property line has a kind of a jog towards, uh, suburban right there. Uh, so we kinda can't really comply with the twenty feet. Plus, as you're entering, uh, this side of the, uh, where I guess, this portion of, uh, Route nine, uh, we basically just wanna clearly delineate, uh, which entrance and which is exit. Uh, you can kinda see that the frontage of the site is pretty narrow, uh, so we don't want anybody to blow po, blow past it, because if you do, you're gonna have to go all the way up and over and come back to the site. It would take you, no joke, ten minutes, because I've done that before.
So you can come in off West Farms?
Uh, I guess you could if you made a right, uh, theoretically. Um, so I guess that would save you a little bit of time, but if you're coming off, uh, Route, Route nine, um, traveling that way. But I guess if you didn't know there was an access off West Farms, you just continue on Route nine. So that's, that's the difference. If you're familiar with the site, you know what you're doing, um, but a first-timer might, might miss it. Um, so we're asking for relief for that. Uh, the previous application had the exit sign just as, uh, close to the property line. Uh, we agreed it made more sense to, to move it further into the site to comply with the, the setback.
So that eliminated that, that, that variance?
Correct. Uh, so the next is the, the stormwater management. Um, as you heard already, uh, New Jersey, uh, is just kinda getting a little bit more tougher and tougher with the, the rules and regs. Uh, as part of, uh, coming back with this application, we had to adhere to the, uh, the current regulations. Um, so we have a, a design together. We do have a, a review letter, um, with some minor technical items. Nothing we can't comply with. Uh, the way the site is, uh, currently designed and developed is that the, uh, the lighter gray portions of the, the parking closest to the rear of the site, uh, and then again, on the, the southeast side of the, the site, is designed with porous pavement. Uh, so the water is able to actually infiltrate through the pavement itself. It gets stored in a, a stone bed, uh, and then gets piped, uh, to its final outfall. Uh, we also have two basins, uh, both along Route nine. Uh, the bo, the one, uh, in the bottom right, and then there's one also, uh, that, yep, so there, there's two, two basins right there. Uh, the, the middle one that separates the, the two drive-throughs, uh, is a, uh, just a detention basin, so it stores the water, holds it there, and then discharges to its final outfall. The one off to the, to the right, uh, has been designed as a fire retention, infiltration basin. Uh, so it has some plants and, uh, biomedial mix in the middle of it, um, and then everything discharges to Route nine. Uh, we are asking for relief, uh, just like the previous application, uh, where there is a requirement where the basins have to be out of the front yard setback. Uh, and the way the site is currently, uh, sloped, uh, there's a high side, uh, farther in the rear of the site, and then everything slopes towards Route nine. So all the drainage today goes from back to front. We're just maintaining existing, uh, drainage patterns, uh, so realistically, there's no, no real feasibility, uh, to provide the detention, uh, anywhere else on site, uh, besides the porous pavement sections that were already, uh, provided.
And that's pretty much it.
So, um, there were a number of comments that, uh, were raised, uh, both in the CME letter as well as in the Avakian letter. I think you've addressed a number of them, but just for the records, our record is clear. Can you stipulate to otherwise comply with the provisions of each of those review letters?
Correct. Each of those review letters, uh, there's nothing in those review letters we can't comply with.
And again, most recently, the, uh, August twelfth CME letter and the August sixteenth Avakian letter, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one, uh, I think just one question. It's really just about loading.
Sure.
And how the delivery trucks will come to the site. Uh, we had thought that there might be a conflict with parking spaces. If you could just speak to that?
Sure.
Let me put up the truck exhibit?
Thank you.
This was previously submitted, correct?
No.
I have it as eight twenty. Circulation exhibits for fire truck, garbage truck, and delivery truck?
The delivery truck is different. The one that you have is different than this one.
Okay, then this is eight twenty-four?
So this is an exhibit of the delivery truck and the anticipated route that it will take. Uh, so we.
What's the, what's the wheelbase?
Uh, I'd have to look.
If you, if you know.
This is tractor trailer. It's identifying it as an overall length of forty-eight feet.
Correct.
But articulated vehicle.
Yes, so it is, it will be a tractor trailer, uh, based on the, uh, the client's, um, I guess, notes that we have for the, the vehicle. It is overall length of forty-eight feet. Uh, you can see it enters, uh, off Route nine, uh, drives up the, the drive aisle going in the, I guess, northeast direction. Uh, there is a loading zone in the rear, between the rear of the building and where the trash enclosure is. Uh, it can enter into the, the loading zone, uh, and not clip any of the, the parking stalls, uh, and then it will sit there, unload, you know, thirty, forty minutes, uh, kinda do what it needs to. It will back up into the drive aisle and then leave the site, uh, via West Farms Road. Uh, so the, the way, uh, loading operations take place, it takes place very early morning. Uh, sometimes the operator chooses to do deliveries overnight. Uh, so really, uh, early morning, the drive-thru's not that busy. The site itself is all, not that busy. Uh, everything will be done by the time, uh, peak operations will take place, which is around lunch and, and dinner time. Same thing with, uh, garbage truck. Uh, garbage will be provided via, uh, private hauler. Uh, it will take place very early morning. Thank you.
Anything, Chen?
I have nothing.
Laura?
I also have nothing.
All right. Anybody from the board? Any questions? Like those junior bacon cheeseburgers. Um, all right. Anybody from the public, which there is nobody? They're delicious. I could probably pound about seven of them.
How do you have more questions? This is privately owned or franchise owned?
This is privately owned, sir.
Privately owned. It's not the same owner as the other one?
It is.
Oh, it is?
Same as the Route nine south.
Okay.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Nope.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Kelly, applicant, would now call Daniel Block, uh, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
Oh, okay, sure.
Just wanna add some proofs on the, uh, on the variance testimony.
Yeah, absolutely.
They need to put a case on it.
Just, just briefly. Thank you.
It's fine. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Daniel Block, B-L-O-C-H.
If you could just qualify, Mr. Block?
Yes. Um, Mr. Block, do you possess any licenses from the state of New Jersey?
Yes, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and member of the American Cert, American Institute of Certified Planners.
And have you given testimony before planning and zoning boards in this state?
Yes, uh, I have testified before the Howell Zoning Board, not the Planning Board, and numerous, too many to count, other municipalities.
We'll accept your credentials, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Okay, um, Mr. Block, you, you're, you're aware of the application, and you've heard the testimony given, um, by Mr. Kelly this evening, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and there are several variances that are sought?
Yes.
Can you take the board through those variances and the relative proofs under either the C one or the C two criteria as applicable for those variances, sir?
Yes. So the first one is an existing non-conforming condition, which is the minimum lot frontage. We have a hundred and fifty-six feet of frontage along Route nine. Two hundred feet is required. Um, so to the extent we need relief for that, we're asking for a C one variance. Um, the next one is for accessory structures within the front yard. Your Planner's Review Letter calls out that we have, uh, two stormwater basins, curbing, uh, timber guard rails, guide rail, and a chain link fence and some retaining walls, all in the front yard, which are not permitted. So we are requesting C one hardship variance on those.
Chain link fence is for what? Chain link fence is for?
Chain link fence and, um, a retaining wall.
Where, where is the chain link fence being used? I'm sorry.
It's around the detention basins.
Yeah, we don't love that.
Yeah, we would prefer to have a no climb.
Prefer something else.
Yeah, like a decorative, no climb.
Like a split rail with mesh.
Yeah.
We don't want chain link.
No chain link.
We can stipulate to that?
Thank you.
Split rail with mesh, yeah.
Split rail with mesh, so noted?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next variance, as Mr. Kelly noted, was for the directional sign, the entrance sign, um, coming in off of Route nine, is about two feet off of the property line, where we've required twenty feet, and we're asking for a C one hardship variance for that, um, due to the unique shape of the property along the frontage. You're really pulling that sign back away from the travel lane, so we need that to be a little bit closer so that the oncoming traffic can see the sign and know where to turn in.
So I would not agree that's a C one. I think it's a C two. But I do think that the traffic safety and the visibility and the traffic safety and the location outweighs the detriment, but I don't think it's a C one variance.
I can go, I can go with C two also. We're promoting purpose H, which is to, uh, to promote the free flow of traffic, so I'm fine with that as well.
C one, no, but C two, yes.
Uh, the number, total number of signs, we're requesting variance relief, um, and, and mainly due to the number of pylon signs, and then the menu boards and, and ordering signs for the drive-thru. So the total number of signs exceeds what is permitted, which is two. So we're, we are requesting variance relief under a C two for that.
But you are reducing what you initially requested, right?
Correct.
So there's gonna be two wall signs instead of three wall signs, right?
That's correct.
Overall reduction from eight to seven?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So we're, we're requesting C two relief on that. Um, again, promoting the free flow of traffic. We need those signs in certain locations to advise the, uh, traffic to enter the site. The next two variances relate to the number of parking spaces, and again, this variance was previously granted, um, for the larger building. So the, the three thousand four hundred square foot building would have required a hundred and fifteen parking spaces. Under the smaller building, we require eighty, and, uh, Mr. Kelly testified to that parking study, which shows they don't need that much parking for this use. So we are requesting, uh, a variance for forty-two spaces on site. So C two variance relief for that is requested. Uh, so for all of these, we're, we believe that they, the variances promote the, uh, public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, promoting purpose A of the municipal land use law, and, uh, also purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space for a variety of uses according to their respective environment. So we believe this is an appropriate use. These variances, um, are, are necessary for the implementation of this site plan for a use which is permitted, um, a, a restaurant with a drive-thru along the Route nine corridor. So I, I believe we meet the positive criteria for all of these variances. Uh, the negatives, I do not see any substantial detriment to the public good with the conditions added for the fence. The detention basins are really necessary to be in the front yard. There's really no other way to, uh, handle stormwater on site. They need to be in that location to drain to Route nine. Um, so that's a, a, a C one variance. Um, and I did review the master plan and the zoning ordinance, and I don't see any substantial detriment to the master plan or the zone plan. Um, we are consistent with a number of the goals and objectives of the master plan, which is, uh, i- in general, to improve the local economy, um, and can, and to, uh, encourage the redevelopment or revitalization of vacant or underutilized site, which we have here in between two developed sites. Um, so for that reason, I believe all those C variances could be granted. And we are also requesting a, a few design waivers or exceptions from, from the ordinance. Uh, so we're requesting that relief under section fifty-one of the municipal land use law, which says that, uh, if the literal intent and purpose of the ordinance is, uh, is, will be impracticable or exact an undue hardship because of the peculiar conditions, you could grant relief with the understanding that the general condition of the site is acceptable as designed. So the first one that was mentioned was for lighting. Um, because of the uniqueness of the site, we are retaining that wooded area. That's all zero foot handles. If we were to remove that area, the majority of the paved areas complies with exception to those two areas Mr. Kelly noted, just at those entrances due to the DOT requirements. So we are requesting a waiver for that. Um, the drive aisle width and, uh, there's two, two waivers for the drive aisle width, which requires a thirty-foot drive aisle for emergency vehicles or a twenty-five foot wide drive aisles for any other drive aisles. And we have twenty-foot drive aisles, I believe. Uh, Mr. Kelly did show the, the turning template that the emergency vehicles can maneuver through the site, so I don't believe there's any detriment there. So we believe that, uh, due to the narrowness of the site, we really can't provide any more width on those driveways.
Well, and your drive aisle is twenty-five feet where it's two-way, correct?
Correct.
So that, this is merely where you have one-way traffic?
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay. So that's it for the waivers. Uh, it's just those three. There were a number that were identified, which were, we redesigned the plan to remove.
Thank you.
No further questions at this time, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Block.
Okay. Chen, Laura, anything?
They're not done.
Members?
Thank you, Mr. Block. Thank you.
Sure. Look forward to finally seeing it built.
Yeah.
That's, that's legitimate. Yeah, absolutely.
So I was just curious.
Just make sure you make some.
I'm just curious, because they have the same lot, correct? And now the building's being shrunk in size?
Yes.
And then they want a variance for less parking as well?
No, 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 no. It's the same amount of, what they're saying is, it's the same amount of parking as was proposed when they had the larger building. So the relief is actually of less intensity, because now it applies to the smaller building. So they, they need fewer parking spaces, so the disparity is less now than it previously was.
Okay, I was just wondering what we're gonna do with all the property being the, if everything is shrinking, so, but thank you.
Applicant rests, Mr. Chairman, board members. Thank you for the opportunity on, on behalf of the applicant to make the presentation and bring everything this, you know, to, to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
In fact, thanks to the board's professionals as well for their thorough review of everything. Excellent. Um, I don't think there's any members of the public here, so.
Well, open it just for purposes of the record.
I will open it to the public for comment. Seeing none. I will close it. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Counselor, good to go?
Good to go.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion with all the things that we discussed. Uh, the update to the F light fixture, it'll be updated on the plans and then reviewed by our, our professionals before, for, uh, a final approval. And what else did we have? We, we had, uh, the variances and the waivers that are needed, right?
Split rail.
Split rail, right. Uh, no chain link fence. We'll have a, a more mesh, no climb, uh, appropriate type fence.
Are you making a motion?
I am.
Okay.
I am making a motion. I'm just adding the, the list of, of, anything else that I missed?
I think that, that's all.
That's it? Thank you.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Councilman Gager?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
And Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good night.
I guess that's Yeah, is there any master plan update?
We're gonna have a reexamine, public hearing soon. We had a subcommittee meeting last month, there were comments, they've been incorporated, it's gonna be distributed to the full board, the draft, next week, and then we're gonna have a public hearing on it soon.
Excellent. Before you jumped off, I'm asking, did everybody that was, did they get the copy of the IES model lighting regulations?
Probably not.
That have been fighting for 12 years now.
I mean, that's a recommendation in there, but
Yeah, it's been a recommendation, the zoning board's been the recommendation.
That's up to the governing body, Brian, I mean, we can continue to recommend it, but we can't require it until the governing body adopts it.
Does the governing bodies had a look at it?
Yes.
Ron, any reason to go to executive session? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Make a motion. Second. All right, thank you, everybody, good night. Good night.
Thank you.